This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, good evening, everybody, and thank you for joining the City of Kingston Planning Board at our monthly meeting. Today is November 16th, 2020. My name is Suzanne Cahill. I am the Planning Director for the City of Kingston and the Organizer for our virtual meeting. Before we begin our meeting, we'd like to go over a few meeting guidelines to help us navigate this system as efficiently and respectfully as possible. We ask that members of the public and the press remain muted and off-camera for the length of the meeting. As the Organizer, I reserve the right to mute anyone who unmutes themselves. Board members and city staff will control their own mute button. As good practice, we ask that you mute yourself if you are not speaking to avoid background noise and feedback. If a board member or staff wishes to speak, they will raise their hand. The chairperson will call on them before they speak by stating their name clearly for our audio listeners. The board member will then unmute themselves, state their name, and speak clearly, muting after finished. All of our meetings are recorded. Both video and written transcriptions will be made available to the public on the city's website at a later date. In lieu of public speaking during the monthly meeting, we requested all comments to be received by 2:00 P.M. on Friday, November 13th, 2020. Comments could have been emailed to Suzanne Cahill, Planning Director, at SKHill@Kingston-NY.gov, mailed, or placed in the Dropbox outside of City Hall. All written comments received specific to any agenda item will be recognized on the city's website. If you go to www.kingston-ny.gov. If you go to the bottom of the homepage under Planning Board Meeting, click on Public Planning Board and the Agenda Packet, and you will see there all of the items, and you will go to your specific one. If you have any audio issues, send a text message to the following number, 845-443-0416. I will repeat the number again, but be aware that phone calls will not be answered during the meeting. The number to text is 845-443-0416. As the Organizer for today's meeting, I reserve the right to lock and pause the meeting to eject anyone who has behaved inappropriately or to enter into an attorney-client conference if needed. Materials for this meeting, again, may be found on the City of Kingston website, www.kingston-ny.gov. Once on the homepage, scroll to the bottom under Meetings, where you see the Planning Board Meeting posted. Click on the Agenda Packet. We want to thank you for your patience during these difficult times, and on behalf of the Planning Board, I wish you and your family good health. I now turn the floor over to Chairman Wayne Platt to call the meeting to order at 6:04 P.M.
Thank you, Suzanne. Good evening, everybody. My name is Wayne Platt. We are going to begin the November 16th, 2020 Planning Board Meeting. Introductions, again, my name is Wayne Platt. We also have Charles Palaco, Robert Jacobson, Matt Gillis, Kevin Roach, Vince Archer, and we also have Suzanne Cahill, Planning Director. Kyle Adida is the Assistant Planner. And we also have Dan Gardenstein. He is the Assistant Corporation Counsel for the City of Kingston. I know some folks are here for a few of the, I call them, big-ticket items here. And I want to move some of these items to the front of the meeting because they're going to be either removed or tabled. And the first item is item number 16, which is part of the rezoning recommendations. Do you want me to read this to the record and then go into this? Yes?
Yes, please.
Item number 16, this is under rezoning recommendation. It's a recommendation to Common Council on rezoning multiple parcels in the areas commonly referred to as Golden Hill and Lawton Park in Perrin's Common Council Resolution Number 153 of 2020. From Zones Triple R and R1, which is One Family Residence, O2, which is Limited Office, M1, Light Manufacturing, and C3, General Commercial, to R6, Multiple Residence, Seeker Determination Zone Triple R, R1, O2, M1, and C3. They are in Wards 3 and 5, and Kingston Common Council Action are the multiple owners. Do you want to put it to record why this is being pulled for consideration at this time?
Yes, again, Sue Cahill, Planning Director. So as we discussed at the October Planning Meeting, staff has met and worked with the Alderman, Alderman Tallerman, who was the sponsor of the rezoning request. We've also received additional feedback and comments were also required and considered. So we've developed some new options and ideas. We've discussed them and reviewed them, and then it was further recognized that the proposal is a Type 1 action with 25 or more acres being considered. So with that being said, at this time, it's our understanding as staff level that the proposal, as it was originally presented, is being withdrawn, and a new revised map configuration will be resubmitted. And then at that time, the Common Council should take the steps to initiate the seeker process to vet out more concerns and issues, as have already been recognized to date. And basically, that is it in a nutshell. With that, I would recommend that the board make a motion to table this, requesting the additional time to assess and evaluate the new information as it comes forward.
Okay, this is Wayne Platt. Now, Sue, with tabling this, it doesn't necessarily mean that it may appear on next month's agenda, correct?
Not necessarily, but in all likelihood, yes, it will be.
Any questions or comments from the board? All right, this is Wayne Platt. I make a motion that we table item number 16. Do I have a second? Second by Robert Jacobson. All in favor? We have Wayne Platt is a yes. Charles Palaco?
Is a yes.
Robert Jacobson?
Yes.
Matt Gillis?
Yes.
Kevin Roach?
Yes.
Okay, that motion is passed, and item number 16 is tabled. Sue, do we want to go?
Just recognize Katie Bowarski is with us now.
Katie?
Good evening, Wayne.
Do we want to move anything else up right now, Sue? I didn't know, maybe item 10?
We wanted, yes, item number 10.
This is under Old Business. Item 10 is 2-16 Montropose Avenue. It's a site plan to make changes to drainage. Section block allotted 56.42-4-7. Seeker Determination Zone Triple R, Coastal Zone, Heritage Area. Ward 9, Andrew Wright is the applicant. Blue Stone Realty is the owner. Now, Sue, you had a discussion with Andrew Wright. There's, this was the proposal for the, obviously, for the drainage of that site. And there are some items that need to be addressed or taken care of before the board can act on it. And do you want to outline what your discussion was today?
Yes, again, Sue Cahill, Planning Director. The applicant phoned today and is not available to attend this evening's meeting. But with that said, as part of our review of this submission, it was referred, at the request of this board, to the city engineer, and staff also referred it to the Superintendent of Public Works for comment back to us. And you have those comments in your staff notes that you can review. But based on those comments, and staff concurs with the finding that we believe this item should be tabled and that plans should be submitted that are completed by a licensed engineer and stamped, and they would show the detail of the drainage system, and they would also show site stabilization, noting the vegetation removal and the impact of that on the site. And I have spoken with the applicant about that, and they are willing to go ahead and do that plan. So I would make the motion to table and require them to do that work and come back to the board.
Okay, this is Wayne Platt again. And as you had stated, that the applicant wasn't going to be able to make it to tonight's meeting anyway. So at this time, I'll make a motion that we table item number 10. Do I have a second on that? Second by Robert.
Wayne, I would ask you amend your motion with the table to require them to submit, to direct them to submit a drawing and plan done by a licensed engineer that addresses the drainage and the vegetation for site stabilization.
Okay, I thought I was incorporating that, I'm sorry, Sue. So, yeah, I'm going to incorporate Sue's comments right there into this, into this motion. And I do have a second from Charles Palaco on that. Any discussion on it? Okay, all in favor, Wayne Platt is a yes. Charles Palaco?
Yes.
Robert Jacobson?
Yes.
Matt Gillis?
Yes.
Kevin Roach?
Yes.
Motion is passed. Okay. Okay, we can move to, you want to, so I talk about item 15, are we good with that? I could just move to the beginning of the meeting then, the front end of it?
The only housekeeping item would be that the Abiel Street item is not going to be, they're not going to be available tonight for the discussion on the development of the Abiel Street properties. And I have to find the number.
I'll read that into the record now, then?
Yes.
This is Wayne Platt again. This is under discussion. Item number 15 is number 144, number 146-148, number 150-156, number 156-160, and number 162-168, Abiel Street. It's a discussion on a conceptual plan for a multifamily project. Section block allotted 56.43-5-1 and 56.50-6-20, 19, 18, 16. That's in Zone RT, partially within the Rota Historic District, also in Heritage Area. Coastal Consistency, Ward 8, Hudson Valley Development LLC and C&amp;B Developers LLC are the owners. So at this time, I'll make a motion that we table item number 15.
Wayne?
Because the applicant cannot.
Wayne, you do not need to make the motion to table. This was a discussion only, so there was no action. You do not need to take action. I would note that, because this is the second month in a row, that the item will not be placed back on the agenda until we have confirmed date by the applicant and their representative.
Okay, all right. So no motion, no tabling. We're just pulling it from the discussion aspect of it then.
Correct.
Okay. Moving back to the first page here. Item number one is adoption of the October 19th, 2020 Planning Board Meeting Transcript and Decisions. Everybody has received a copy of those items. Any discussion, any deletions, additions? Okay, everybody know, okay? At this time, this is Wayne Platt again. I will make a motion that we adopt the October 19th, 2020 Planning Board Meeting Transcript and Decisions. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Charles Palaco. All in favor, Wayne Platt is a yes. Charles Palaco?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Gillis?
Yes.
Roach?
Yes.
That is passed. Moving into public hearings. Item number two is 412 East Chester Street, subdivision of the lands of WSSA Equities LLC. Section block allotted 48.75-7-19. Seeker Determination Zone C2, Ward 7, WSSA Equities LLC is the owner. Do we have anybody from there, from the applicants?
Yes, Colin Houghton, Land Surveyor, representing the applicants.
Hi there.
Hi.
All right. And Kyle's got the, I want to recognize Alderman Don Tallerman has now joined us. I see him on our list. He's the Common Council Liaison to the Planning Board. All right. Do you want to just tell us about your application? Looks pretty simple.
Sure, we have a one-acre lot in the C2 zone that currently has a metal frame building that's, has been used for a dojo, which is sort of a martial arts teaching facility. And then out in the front is a single-story residential, or well, one-and-a-half-story house that is currently, even though it's in the C2 zone, it's operating under a permit that was issued by the city for residential purposes. And what we're looking to do is to separate the two structures out into two separate lots. One of them will be about three-quarters of an acre, and the other will be about a quarter of an acre. That's pretty much it in a nutshell. I'm not sure what the ultimate use for that one-and-a-half-story frame structure in the front will be. It's entirely possible that they will look to either continue or maybe even make permanent its use as a residential structure use. I know that that will require further action from the city on that. I configured that lot so that it meets the adjacent RR specifications so that there wouldn't be any variances required if they were other than perhaps a use variance for residential purposes. So that's pretty much it in a nutshell. We're not, there's no new construction as a result of this. It's just separating out the existing structures.
And for, this is Wayne Platt. For the board's reference purposes, this is in the proximity of Mickey Ziegler and Gallagher's hardware store or pump facility there on East Chester Street. Everything is in line here, Sue? They meet the zoning requirements for these lots, correct?
Correct. The only item that we would ask to be placed onto the plan, Colin, would be to add the utility connections for the rear structure so that they are located and we are identifying that there are no easements required there.
I'm about 99% certain where those utilities exist. I reached out to every department in this city to try to get whatever they might have had, you know, sketches or whatever. And I really kind of came up empty. What I wound up getting was a narrative from the former owner of the property who built that dojo in the back. And he told me in pretty clear terms where those connections went. You could see in the front, the way the maps oriented, to the left of the driveway that leads back to the dojo, there's a water main there. And what I was told is that everything was buried in the same trench to the left of that driveway, basically in line with that water main. So I'm confident that what I'm showing is that there wouldn't be any easements required. I just can't say that with 100% certainty right now. And I, you know, I know the dig number is an option, but you really should only use the dig number if you're intending to dig. And I mean, I'm open to suggestions if you have any.
Did you follow up with the Building Safety Division? They have the actual drawings of that, because that's fairly new construction, that building in the rear. They should have the lines indicating all of that.
I do have plans indicating how they were proposed prior to construction. But I don't think that they were installed exactly the way that they were proposed. And that was all that, that was all that Building and Safety had. And the plans were done by north engineers who I share office space with, so I have access to all of their stuff on it. I mean, I can see when I'm there and I'm walking down that driveway, a little bit of a depression where clearly there's been some earth moving going on, or where there had been some earth moving going on. And that matches up perfectly with the narrative that the former owner gave me in terms of where those trenches, where the trench went for the utilities. It's just absent my ability to see through the ground to where the pipes are.
The Water Department may be able to give you an assist.
I checked with them.
They can't go and mark out? They should be able to mark out.
Okay, I could try that.
Yeah.
I'll give it a shot. That's basically what I could tell you. One other thing that I wanted to mention, there is a possibility that prior to the next meeting, I've been doing this layout sort of virtually similar to this meeting with my client. And there might be a minor adjustment, nothing more than four or five feet in the depth of Lot Number 1. We're going to meet actually out in the field. He was unable to do it because he got sick, not COVID, but he got sick. And we weren't able to do it. But it's not going to materially change the application.
Okay.
I just didn't want you to be surprised if that happened.
Okay.
This is Wayne Platt. So these items that, you know, the depth of that Lot 1 and also the utility placement, that's something that can be taken care of at staff level, right?
I'm confident we can do it, yes.
All right, anything else? All right, under Seeker, this is an unlisted action, so no further review of the board is required at this time. So at this time, I'll make a motion that we approve item number 2 with Board Policy 6.
Wayne, it is an unlisted action, so you do have to do a neg dac.
Oh.
Not Type 2.
Okay, okay. I'm looking at something else here. Okay, so Kyle, you have the seeker form coming up here? So, thank you, Sue.
Wayne, I don't have that to share at the moment, but we have it.
Okay, and it is in order, we're good with that?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so at this time, I'll make a motion that we adopt, approve the seeker. Do I have a second on that? Second by Robert Jacobson. All in favor, Wayne Platt is a yes. Charles Palaco?
Is a yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Gillis?
Yes.
Roach?
Yes.
That is passed. All right, so at this time, I'll make a motion that we approve item number 2 with Board Policy 6 to be signed. The required amount of paper copies and Mylar copies to be supplied, and also the utilities will be shown on the final map as well as any adjustments to that lot depth on Lot Number 1. And those two items can be taken care of at staff level.
With written descriptions as well, please.
Written descriptions as well. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
By Charles Palaco. And all in favor, Wayne Platt is a yes. Charles Palaco?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Gillis?
Yes.
Roach?
Yes.
All right, thank you, Colin.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Okay, moving on to item number 3. Is 283-287 and 295 Albany Avenue. Lot Line deletion of the lands of Perfect Homes LLC. Section block allotted 48.317-1-5 and 48.73-1-20. Seeker Determination Zone Triple R, Ward 2. John Gerd Heidecker, PLLC is the applicant. Perfect Homes LLC is the owner. All right. Do we have representatives for item number 3 here?
Yes, Mr. Heidecker.
Yes, hello, everyone. So this is basically a lot line deletion. They want to merge two lots. The smaller lot is a non-conforming lot within the current zoning law, and the idea would be to simply merge the two together. There are no structures on the vacant lot, Lot 5. It has a tiny bit of gravel parking area.
Okay. Everything's good on staff level with this then, Sue?
Yeah, we just need the copies and the written description and Policy 6.
Anybody have any questions for the applicant? Okay, under Seeker, this is an unlisted action, so we will have to render a determination of environmental significance. Kyle, you have?
You know what, Wayne, this one should be a Type 2, is a lot line deletion. Sorry, I might have that wrong in the notes.
So Type 2 indicates that we will not have to render any type of environmental significance. Okay, so that is into record. So at this time, I'll make a motion that we approve item number 3 with Board Policy 6. Written descriptions to be submitted, as well as the proper amount of paper and Mylar copies to be supplied. Do I have a second on that? Second by Kevin Roach. All in favor, Wayne Platt is a yes. Charles Palaco?
Is a yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Matt Gillis?
Yes.
Roach?
Yes.
Good. All right, thank you, Mr. Heidecker.
Thank you so much, have a good night, everyone.
All right, item number 4 is 336-338 East Chester Street. Special permit renewal to operate a gasoline station. Section block allotted 48.83-2-1.100. Seeker Determination Zone C2, Ward 7. MNZ Realty Holdings Incorporated is the applicant owner. Okay, do we have a representative here?
Yes.
How are you tonight?
How are you doing, everybody?
All right, let's see here. The most recent approval was in April 2020 for a period of six months. Do you own it this year?
Yes, sir.
And it says here that you had planned to do some maintenance to the property. What has been, can you describe what you?
We're going to repaint everything. We just put the canopy and the new pumps, and we're going to do the blacktops and put the new fence. Since the coronavirus, you know, we didn't get a chance to get the labor, all the stuff, but hopefully, we'll be doing as soon as possible.
And also, do you have a garage back there for automotive repairs?
Yes, sir.
And you also own that small diner?
Yes, sir.
But right now, Sue, we're just talking about the gasoline station, correct?
We're talking about the whole property, that's for.
Yeah, full property.
Full property, okay. All right. All right, I just don't remember talking about the diner when Andrea had it, that's all. Just want to confirm that.
Sure, sure, sure. Andrea is still helping us, you know. Anything happen, you know, I was tenant for Andrea for last 10 years. So we just took over the property, and she's good with us, you know. We have very good relations, so anything we need, she always there for us and help us.
Okay. And hours of operation, sir?
It's 7 to 10, or 11 sometime, a weekend.
Okay. All right. Anything jumping out of this, other than anything, Sue?
No, we're just going to add the new. Um, no, we're just going to add the, uh, new policy with the Knox box and you do need to set a term.
Okay. Um. I see, well, the last term was for six months and, uh. What are you recommending a year for the, for this particular time or? Anything longer?
Yes, Suzie, I have a question. I think she had it, Andrea had it last two year, for last, last time she had it two years.
It was issued, right, January of eighteen, it was given two years.
Yes, please, okay.
And April of twenty twenty, it was given six months.
Oh, I see, I see. For, I don't know that, but only I know about the two years.
And that was, that was to address, that was because we were hoping you would be able to address the, um, upgrades.
Definitely, definitely. Uh, we put just new pump and, uh, the signs, everything. Since the virus, you know, we had a two times robbery on the gas station. Uh, they broke the thing and they damaged a lot of stuff, so we are behind a little bit with the. Uh, money wise, so hopefully, we have to do that as soon as possible. I'm definitely working on it.
What, what do you anticipate, what timeframe do you anticipate that you need to complete the outstanding items?
Uh, probably, uh, we're talking about the six to eight month.
Okay.
Like I say, you know, the business is very slow right now, so hopefully, you know, we get little money. So, um, working on it, soon as I get it, I have to make it look better, everything nice and clean.
How's everybody feel about a year? Good, okay. Okay, looks like we're gonna go for, recommend a year to have you come back again, okay? Sir, that'll give you some time. To take care of some of the issues you've just talked about, alright?
Mm-hmm. And we're good to go, right, for the one year, right?
Uh, we're gonna, we're gonna vote on some other stuff here now too, and, uh, it should just be about a minute or so, we'll send you on your way, alright?
Not a problem.
Um, any other questions from the board? Okay. Um. Alright, at this time, I'll make a motion that we approve item number four for a period of one year. And all original conditions carried forward. Sue, the only additional board policy was twenty-five that I'm seeing here, is that it?
Would you please first recognize it as a type-two action under seeker?
Yeah. Uh, it is a type-two action under seeker, so no further review of the board is required. Um. Alright, uh, so that is a motion, and the only addition, other than all of the original conditions carried forward. Will be the installation of a Knox box. And do I have a second on that? Second by Robert Jacobson. All in favor, Wayne Platt is a yes. Charles Palaco?
Is a yes.
Robert Jacobson?
Yes.
Pat Gillis?
Yes.
Roach?
Yes.
The motion is carried. Thank you, sir. We'll see you in a year.
Thank you so much, all of you. Have, have, have a good night.
Okay, last item in public hearings is item number five. Fifteen Railroad Avenue is a special permit to convert a portion of an existing building to three residential units. Section block and lot is fifty-six point twenty-five dash four dash twenty-one. Zone C two, it's a mixed-use overlay district. Ward five, fifteen Railroad LLC is the applicant owner. And who do we have here tonight?
The applicant owner is here.
It's me, Turu Ilgan.
How are you tonight?
LLC.
Okay, let me just get your name properly spelled here. There we go. Alright, you wanna give us a? Tell us what you wanna do here, sir?
Sure, it's a relatively small project. I'll read the narrative real quick. It's a special permit request in, uh, the C two commercial district with the midtown mixed-use overlay. What we're asking for is a change in use of just a small portion of an existing building from commercial offices to. Uh, residential apartments. The area of work is only a few floors, um, less than a third of the building, and. Parking is provided, it's existing. Um. And. The way we see this application would reduce occupant load of the building, provide housing which is in high demand. Uh, at the same time while office use is on the decline. Um. All the current tenant leases are being honored. Uh, so nobody's getting displaced. And, um, during the COVID pandemic, most of these offices sit empty anyhow. Um, so I see this as a way to also, uh, bolster the vitality and the diversity of the neighborhood. Um. And, uh, as far as I can see, the zoning district is, the mixed-use, uh, allows and encourages type of, uh, use. Uh, so thank you for your consideration.
Okay, this is Wayne Platt here again. The parking you're referring to, is that across the street under that solar awning, the solar?
Yes, sir, it is.
And Sue, that is adequate? We have enough parking over there for it?
Yes, this use is actually a reduction in the demand for the off-street parking after calculating it.
And this is not the coffee shop, it's the one next to the left of it. I'm looking at that picture right.
Correct, yes.
Right. Alright, um. You have any questions, Sue, for, has all, the, the parking, the refuse, the exterior, all these issues have been addressed already?
No, um, Turu, with the, with the refuse, can you just explain how you anticipate handling, um, the refuse? From the building and particularly from these residential units since they. Will most likely generate slightly more than a typical office would and a different type of waste?
Sure, currently, there's a dedicated place in the side alley. For containers, trash recycling. And, um, it's, it's collected every week. And, uh, we have staff that, uh. Maintain the common areas and every tenant brings down their own trash and recycling.
Okay.
According to the schedule.
Turu, you use city collection?
Uh, yeah.
And the only other question we had, I mean, are there any outward modifications, um, that you're going to be making to this building? Um, to address the residential nature or you're basically, they're just gonna, it's gonna remain the same?
It should mostly remain the same unless, as we do a detailed code analysis, if building permit. I mean, if, uh, building department requires something in particular. Such as a better light fixture or, um, more light coverage, that would be addressed, but. I think for the most part, it should be adequate as is. Um, and obviously, the original appearance of the building would wanna stay the same.
I agree.
Um, this is Wayne Platt. What's on the fourth floor right now?
The fourth floor use currently is office, um. And it's one tenant for the whole floor.
And also, um, there's, is this connected over to twenty Thomas Street as well? Is this over there?
Not this application, but the building is, yes, that's one other entrance.
Just trying to figure, I believe there's a Knox box there that would, that covers this building as well. That's in that back alley? This is the one that Teddy Musick is own, right?
Yes, correct. There is a Knox box right on that side, the side alley entrance.
Anything else from the board? Sue, do you have anything else?
Uh, the only other, um, question we would have is for mail receptacles, um. How, how is that handled now? Are they, um, on the interior hall, in the interior hallway?
Not yet, but that is the proposal to incorporate it into the interior lobby space. And clean up the exterior so the old mailboxes on the front.
Yeah.
Would eventually be replaced and removed. And, uh, the big, the historic masonry would be restored to the original. And I think that would be an improvement in function and appearance.
I agree. Okay.
Anything else from the board? Okay. Um, under seeker, it's a type-two action, correct, Kyla?
Yeah.
Okay, so no further review of the board is required. Um. So.
This is a special permit too, Wayne, so you need a term.
That's what I was just looking at. Um. Are we, we thinking one year or what do we, what do we think here? Two? Robert says two. Anybody else with a two? Duck, I'm thinking two, okay, looks like that's the, the consensus here.
Wayne, you're gonna have a year of construction.
Yeah, copy that. Alright, um. So it looks like we're gonna go with a two-year, uh, term. So, Sue, can you go over, I'm gonna make a motion that we approve this item. Uh, with, 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 uh, all of these policies and what have you, and can you go over, we're gonna take out the Knox box because the gas went already.
Well, I would leave the policy in, that means that, because that will allow it to affirm that it's going to stay in place. So the policies would be for, uh, policy six, twenty-two, twenty-five, and twenty-six. And that's it.
Okay.
And then the two-year term.
Okay. Alright, that is a motion. Do I have a second? Robert Jacobson has a second. All in favor. Wayne Platt is a yes. Charles Palaco?
Is a yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Gillis?
Yes.
Roach?
Yes.
That is passed. Mr. Ilgan?
Yes.
Alright, have a good night.
Thank you so much.
Alright, old business. Uh, item number six is three zero one Broadway. It's a special permit to operate a gasoline station. Section blocking lot is fifty-six point thirty-four dash eight dash four. Determination, zone C two, Ward nine, Speedway LLC is the applicant owner. Uh, okay, who do we have as a representative?
Hi, Mr. Chairman. This is Alec Glad from Cuddy and Fader.
How are you tonight?
Doing well, how are you?
Alright, so last month, this was tabled, correct, Sue? We had, uh, some issues that had to be taken. Alright. Um, we had some issues at the rear of the station, Mr. Glad, with, uh, the condition of the drainage system. As well as, uh, dumpster enclosure and some general maintenance in the back. Um, can you speak to that to tell us how, where we are with that right now?
Yes, so, um, at the request of the board at the last meeting, we submitted to the planning department a timeline of when those improvements would be completed. Um, and beginning at the top with the dumpster enclosure, my understanding is that was fixed in twenty nineteen. Um, there were some issues identified, I think by a neighbor, um, in the front. With some of the light fixtures, um, and those were actually fixed this afternoon, and I forwarded some pictures to the planning department as proof of their fixing. Um, in the drainage improvements and paving of the back lot, we submitted. Uh, a rough markup of the site plans, um, proposing to add a second drywell, so there will be two on site. That's in addition to the one that is, is existing there. Uh, they will connect to provide overflow to each other, um, and then they will repave the approximately. Six thousand square feet, um, of this back parking area, uh, these improvements. Um, the Speedway's contractor is ready to go. They'll take about a week or so once we get the, the approval from the city. Um. And sorry about the rough drawings, but that's the best we could do on a short timeline and trying to. Get something in so we can get an approval and get it done this year.
Okay. Um, Sue, can you speak to the, uh, the items that were submitted and where, what you?
Um, well, well, two things. I mean, we'll start with the parking lot in the rear. That was the major thing, major issue with the stormwater drainage. Cooling back there and not, and the drywall not functioning, so. Um, the plan, Alec, will need to be modified, and we do need some additional details. That our city engineer is going to review, and they would just simply be. Uh, the detail of the catch basin, which is most likely typical that you can get. Um, the detail of the trenching, um, and the interconnecting piping. Uh, we will need that along with. Um, I see the, the paving pitch, there, the pitch of the pavement is going in one direction, but. Um, I think it has to all be directed, um, to those drywell structures, so there must be other pitch. Um. Arrows that I'd like to see and how the, the entire lot is going to be regraded. Um, so that would be one thing, and then I did see very quickly, I looked at your pictures, um, that you sent this evening. For the light fixture, uh, we will go out, I'd like to ask the building's safety division to do an inspection. To confirm the dumpster enclosure, and they will also confirm those lighting fixtures that are completed.
Um, this is Wayne Platt now. Alec, are you, we're under some, some, uh, under the gun now for. Keeping the batch plants open to, uh, do the paving in the back?
Yeah, I think the clock is running on those, um, so Speedway wants to. I guess start as soon as they can, um, to try to make sure we get it done this year.
Speedway in a position to get those, those, uh, renders to, to, uh, have our engineer look at them in a timely fashion so that we can. You know, get that, that, keep, keep the, the, the blacktop coming this year?
Um, yes, I will try. I will follow up with them, um, right after this meeting to try to make sure they, they get on that.
Okay.
And I think that can be left to staff level. If we have the city engineer review and approve them, um, then I think that that would be sufficient. So that they can get going on this improvement and get it in place.
Everybody from the board is okay with that? A thumbs up on leaving that to staff? Okay. Um, okay. Um, I'm looking here, it's staff is recommending a six-month term. Uh. That's, that's a typical, uh, term for, uh, getting the repairs, uh, taken care of, Mr. Glad. Um, and has, has the board feel with that? Good? Okay. Alright, um, any other questions from the board? Okay. Um. So under, under seeker, it's a type-two action, so no further review of the board is required at this time for that. Um, so Sue, do you wanna read, uh, the requirements for the, the applicant, what he's gonna need to do? And then we'll make that into a motion.
Okay, uh, all of the original conditions and board policies will continue to, uh, be in place. And that a final plan showing the pavement pitch, the detail of the trenching and the interconnection and the catch basin will be. Submitted to staff for review and approval, and the building's safety division inspection will be requested for the dumpster enclosure and the lighting.
And we'll, again, we'll try to get everything submitted, Mr. Glad, in a timely fashion so that we can get the blacktop, uh, rolling out, okay?
Yep, absolutely.
What's, the, the items that Sue just described, I'm gonna put that into the form of a motion. Uh, with, and again, we're, we're a period of six months on this, uh, on the term. Uh, do I have a second on that? Second by Robert. Uh, all in favor, Wayne Platt is a yes. Charles Palaco?
Is a yes.
Jacobson? Pat Gillis?
Yes.
Roach?
Yes.
Thank you. Alright, Mr. Glad, thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Take care, sir.
Have a good evening.
Alright, uh. Item number seven is fifty-two dash sixty-eight Work Street, subdivision of the lands of Crossfield Management LLC. Section blocking lot is fifty-six point forty-three dash four dash. Section blocking lot is fifty-six point forty-three dash four dash one. Seeker determination, zone RT, round out historic district, heritage area, coastal consistency. Ward eight, Crossfield Management LLC is the applicant owner. Who do we have here tonight?
Dennis.
Hi, Dennis. All right, so this was tabled last month to get a submission and a feedback from John Stoltke, the city engineer. We have in our notes here, there were some concerns about the dividing up into the three lots and how drainage and grading would be handled. Would it be adversely affecting the subdivision? And Sue, if I'm reading this correctly, the city engineer says that each lot can stand on its own for those purposes, as typical lots in the city do. And he says if there is an intent to mass grade the site, he would like the opportunity to review those plans. But as it's submitted right now, it is, it looks acceptable in his eyes. Is that correct?
Yes.
Any, anything else, Sue, any concern?
We had talked about a couple of notes to be added to the plan. One was for the access easement, that it is intended solely for ingress and egress only. The other notation that we would like to see on the drawing is that the wall along the Works Street stonewall will not be disturbed and will remain intact. And the other thing that we should have on the drawing itself is the buildable area of each lot should be indicated.
And Dennis, can you speak to those, please?
Yeah. Initially, this was, the initial sketch plan that was submitted to Sue was a six lot with a, with a kind of a shared lane coming off of Spring Street to the back of all six lots. Three wood-faced works and one three-wood-faced post street. And discussions with the property owner, we scaled that back. The objective we had was one, which the note you just asked for, was to preserve the nice stone wall on Works Street and the steps that are there would appear along one with existing stone steps. And have the access to essentially all three lots come off of Spring Street, which is more of a side street, more appropriate for access. We felt that the driveway, and that, that's why we put the right-of-way across the back of lot one so that lot two could get out to Spring Street with the driveway. Each of these lots would be subject to a site plan review by the planning board and landmarks, as well as architectural review by landmarks. Is that correct, Sue?
That is correct.
I don't want to presuppose that how someone, I would hope that you'd have three stately Victorian kind of homes or, or other architecture style that meets with the historic district. We propose on each of these three lots to be constructed. And I, and I think that's what would happen. Obviously, a very sensitive area. I know that you had some comments that they wish this would be part of the city park, Cornell Park. The city, I don't think has ever attempted to acquire this parcel for that purpose. So we have no objections to those stipulations. The wall is about four and a half feet high at the very bottom of this lot two. Down to about a thirteen-inch wall at the corner of Spring and Works. So yes, the objective would be to keep that and commit, commit to not disturbing that wall or the stairs, which are in very good shape, that would lead to probably the house on lot one. And I agree with the city engineer that each lot could stand on its own with respect to its services and any drainage issue. But those could be reviewed by the planning board and the city engineer as each owner, a lot owner would come in with their site plan. We can show buildable area on each lot, that's no problem. So those two comments, we have no problem adding to the plans. And like I said, I think this could have been a much higher density proposal. And the applicant decided to, to make it a low-impact, low-density proposal.
Okay. Thank you, Dennis. Anything else, Sue?
I just have a question, Dennis, utilities. So the utility connections, you are looking at them all to go out to Spring Street? Or I'm looking at lot two?
I think lot two, yeah, I mean, I think lot two might be able to go out to Works Street, you know, with a, you know, tunneling under the wall.
Okay.
I think that would probably be better. We could get out to Spring Street, obviously, because it's a downhill run to Spring Street. I'm just not sure if there's a basement gonna be proposed on that lot. They might have to go out to Works to get a gravity flow on the sanitary gas and water, natural gas and water service could come in from Spring or Works. But I don't think tunneling under a small little section of that wall would be any disturbance to the wall. Certainly could, could go under the footing of the wall with a sleeve for, for each of those three items and electric too. So I would say that lot two would probably come out from Works Street and lots one and three would be Spring Street service connections.
Okay.
And you can see there is a gas regulator station on, you know, Spring Street on the property. Or that was carved out of the property, but. So we'd be working around that as well for lot three. And the steep slope that you see along Post Street for lot three.
Right.
That home would have a beautiful view and, because it would be up at the high spot.
Okay, any other questions from the board? Under seeker, this is an unlisted action. So determination of environmental certificates will need to be rendered. Kyla, you do have that document and it's in order?
Yes, sorry.
That's fine, that's fine. Okay, so at this time, I will make a motion that we approve the seeker document. Do I have a second on that? Second by Kevin. All in favor, Wayne Platt is a yes.
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Gillis?
Yes.
Evan Roach?
Yes.
That is passed. And at this time, I'll make a motion that we approve item number seven. And Sue, I know you have a laundry list of things to, for conditions on there. Can you go over those, please?
I have board policy six will be on the plan and signed. We will receive five paper copies and one Mylar of the finished drawing along with written descriptions. On the map, the buildable areas will be shown. There will be a notation added to the plan that the stone wall will be protected, protected and preserved along with staircase. And the note has already been added in the right-of-way that it's ingress and egress. And that, just a note, that it's subject to the HLPC, HAC, and planning board for individual properties to be approved and reviewed.
That is, that is the form of a motion. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
By Charles Palaco, all in favor, Wayne Platt is a yes. Charles Palaco?
A yes.
Robert Jacobson?
Yes.
Matt Gillis?
Yes.
Roach?
Yes.
That is approved. Thank you, Dennis.
I just, one quick question for Sue. What was the other agency that had to review the site plan sites of planning board and landmarks?
Heritage Area Commission.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Okay. Take care. Number eight is seven O Broadway. Special permit renewal for six residential units used in overlay district. Section blocking lot is point twenty-five dash one dash nine point hundred. Seeker determination, zone C two, mixed-use overlay district, heritage area, Ward two. Mohammed Al Shari is the applicant, Morning Tree Corporation is the owner. Mr. Al Shari, are you here tonight?
Yes. Good evening.
How are you, sir?
Very good, thank you. How are you?
Good, good. This was tabled at our last meeting because the applicant was not present. And the initial application was approved in April of 2008 with the most recent renewal in June of 2019 for a period of one year. Where, where are you now with, you got some work going on in the back building, correct? On the Elmendorf Street side?
Yes.
Okay, where are you with that?
I sent to Kali a mail for the pictures, what we almost done since this 2020, when COVID-19 is show off, actually, I'm sorry with that. And we stopped the work so, because that business is dropped down. We shut down like for a whole month, the business till we was thinking that this issue will, will gone away. But since that day, the business is here very slow. And I stopped do the work till get durable money and then start to do the work. I already made the windows, the door, the equipment. I show, I sent the picture to Kali in an email. And if, if all the stuff is ready there and then we start do the framing and do the electric lines and. But we did, we did stop since, like March.
Okay. And do you have a, do you currently have an active building permit on this thing too? Because it's been going on for quite some time.
We have it, but it's expired. I guess I went last, last, last month to start to renew it. But I was looking for, for the plumbing till, so I show up for everything. So I stopped, I wait till I, looking for the plumbing and then I called, everyone is busy. So soon I find one and then I get his license. So we give it to the, to the building department so they can, they can prove it. So we can start to do the work.
And I understand the, you know, the impact that COVID-19 has had. But I mean, the, the work has been going on for 12 years now, right? On that back building?
It is, it is, it is. I, 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 actually, we was, the last, last year, last, this last years and I, the last moment, I was serious because you see the windows there and everything is there. I was gonna finish it this year, we shall be done. But what, what happened is soon with this COVID-19 is show and I stopped do the work and I got, you know, like a little bit a month so I can prove to do all that work. So otherwise, I was, I was gonna finish it, almost, I was working, I never stopped. I was do the work.
And I know that you're a responsible businessman up there. You got a good shop there, you live above the place, right? You're, you do a good job there.
Thank you.
How, how long do you think it'll take? And I think we've asked this question before. How long do you think for, I mean, we can get at least one apartment up and running? Do you mean, we could show some progress there, right?
Definitely, definitely this, this, I hope this, this, this year, if you guys give me another one year, I hope, I hope so, I can finish it. I can absolutely do the work. Because I work, I was not stopping. Because you see the windows and everything were almost done. I shall be working, going on and done. But since, you know, this happened, they stopped me. So I scared a little bit because when the business is slowed down a little bit, I said, let me, let me have a couple dollars in my hand to save for, you know, for the property tax, for the school tax if it's happened. If I was worried about, you know, everybody, maybe the rent they can't pay. You know, there's a lot of things is going on to my mind. So I said, let me hold a little bit, see what's going on. But right now, I, I'll definitely, I love to finish it. I, you don't believe it, how I feel bad. Every day I went to there, look at there, I shall finish there, I shall finish there. I, you know, working outside, I, I mean, last week, I get like people, they was through that, all the stuff to the street and behind the building, I went to the building department, I see what we're gonna do. Also, I go to the, to the police and I, a lot of things. And thanks God, this, the neighbor is a property like land there for the hand, it was a Honda. But they built the fence, that's we save, they save us a lot from people, they go behind the building. There was a P, there was doing drag back there, there was do a lot of thing there. So right now, we have the fence, we are okay from that. It was through all, all the stuff behind the building. I, every, every, like other days, I have to go there so I can clean it. And I look people there, they were there hanging out. I built like a sign, not, not hang out there, no waiting, no trespassing. You know, as a lot of stuff, I need to finish it. So people, if they, they leave there, they will like, like not let people stay there. Not people go behind the building, they can't be, they can't do drag, all that kind of stuff. You don't believe it, how.
I'm, I'm on your side with this, sir. I've done, I'm just, I'm just asking questions. I know that the board is really chomping at the bit to ask. So we want to see some progress done and maybe, you know, hopefully get at least one apartment done by the time we.
I will.
How does everybody feel about a one-year time on this, on this special permit? Good for that? Okay.
Wayne, I'll, I'll say one year COVID, but this is the same story we've heard the past two or three applications. And I haven't seen really any work getting done. So if something isn't done within the next year, I don't know that I'm gonna be a yes vote in the future.
All right. So Mr. Al Shari, we'll, we'll, we'll get on top of that, right? We'll get, we'll, we'll get some progress going on this so we have a, we can, you know, can see this thing up and running by the next time we see you?
Definitely.
All right, anybody else have any questions?
Wayne, there is, this is Sue. There is one other issue that was noted in your staff notes. Mohammed, there's been quite a few violations forgiven to this location for refuse, accession, excessive refuse. I think that it is time to engage a private hauler and get the more frequent pickups than relying on city pickup.
Say, say one more time, I'm sorry.
There's been several violations that have been issued for this property for excessive, exceeding the limit on municipal garbage pickup. So that being said, I think the numbers would certainly indicate that you need to engage a private hauler and have them pick up your refuse and have it be more frequent than a once a week that the city can provide.
I, yes, I discussed that with, with the people that work in the store. And the issue has come from, from, from the business. And I, because if you, I called to, to the public work and I told them if the issue, please, like, because this, the issue is come from that, from the store, from the, from the business. So I, not from the prop, from the, from the, from the corporation building. I, I asked him to, to give him a notice so they can understand, so they can be working for the trash. Because I, I saw the picture, I looked, they gave it to me, I looked for it and I know the foundation. I, I did tell them and I did come to public work to tell them about it. Because like I say before, it's like a lot of issue, I, I did take a picture, I have them here. I, I shall, I.
Right. As the property owner, you are the responsible party. So I think we would strongly encourage that you take a more active role and then participate in getting that accomplished.
Okay, okay. I, I, I did, I did, I did want to the public work and I explained exactly what happened, what is the issue goes on, and we will take care of that. Thank you so much.
Okay.
Anything else?
Wayne?
Yes, Charles.
I concur with, with what Rob Jacobson said. I'm, I'm getting tired of hearing the same story and nothing happening. If, if something doesn't happen, I don't see how I'm gonna be able to support this the next time.
Okay. And I, I think the consensus of the board is, you know, I. consensus of the board is, you know, I, I made it a note here that we've been looking at this thing for twelve years now. So, uh, um, and I, hopefully next time that he comes before us, we will have some progress, right? Um, I, I, I agree with you, Chuck. Good point. Um, anything else for any of the board members? Okay, um. This is type two, uh, under seeker. So no further review of the board is required. Uh, at this time, we'll make a motion that we approve item number eight for a period of one year. Um, we're gonna need to see an active building permit. Okay, Mr. Al Shari?
I will do that. Okay.
Need to see that. And are all original conditions carried forward? And Sue, do we want to make a note on the garbage pickup as well on this?
Yes, that a private hauler will be engaged and also we're gonna add in board policy twenty five with the Knox box as well.
Okay.
All right. So that is a motion. Do I have a second on that? Second by Kevin Roach. All in favor? Wayne, is a yes. Charles Palanco?
Uh, yes.
Jacobson? Matt Gillis?
Yes.
Kevin Roach?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Al Shari.
Yeah, very.
Hopefully we'll.
I hope so.
We'll see you next. All right, pal.
Thank you.
All right, uh, moving to item number nine. It's twenty one O'Neill Street. It's a special permit to establish a drinking establishment in an existing building. Section block and lot is fifty six point twenty five dash two dash fifteen. Seek a determination zone C three ward four. Eric Sterniolo is the applicant owner. Did I pronounce that correctly? As I botched things.
No, you got it. Thank you.
Right. How you doing tonight?
Good. Thank you. Good to see you, everyone again.
All right. So since the last time we, we tabled this last time, right? So since then, you have appeared before the zoning board of appeals and you have been granted a parking waiver for fifteen off-street parking spaces, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And that seemed to be what the focus of the board was, you know, the, the issue of, uh, what we do with parking. So, um, so in my eyes, I don't know, that seems to have been taken care of. Um, and some other issues maybe here, uh, uh, is anybody, anybody else, before I go to anybody else on the board, have anything to say right now?
Wayne, I can with the parking. Um, we've discussed this internally. Um, and with the, um, Eric could go through possibly, uh, the revisions and the changes that have been made to get them to the point where they only needed the fifteen off-street parking spaces. Um, but because that has happened, um, what we would like to ask is that the board and then the applicant consider utilizing that rear area for staff parking only. Um, that way it can be controlled. It can take those spaces off of the street and free up the street parking for actual customers.
What do you think, Eric?
Yeah. Uh, thanks, Sue. We, we did consider that. The issue we ran into was we're putting a gate on the driveway so that people can walk into the back from the street or from our backyard into the street. So.
What we were thinking would be staff parking only. So your staff would come in at a certain time. They open the gate and then, then it stays closed to control. Staff is not gonna be in and out traffic. This would be more stationary traffic for a duration of time.
Right, okay. Our, our thinking was that the driveway was gonna be just totally blocked off, permanently blocked off. But if that's something that the board wants to see, then we're open to that. I also would like to say that we are planning on giving all of our staff members bikes for free. Um, so they'll be able to bike back and forth from work too.
All right, um, I think that's a good, um, a good measure to take, uh, with getting some parking in the back there. Any spot, Sue, do you think we're, I mean, can we get Ray maybe back there? Or what are we looking at? What, what, what do you recommend?
You can get quite a few parking spaces back there, I would think. Uh, one of the questions that we did have, Eric, um, after reviewing your modified plans, are you still thinking that you're going to have the staffing level of twelve, sixteen employees that you originally anticipated?
Uh, no, we, we think it'll be reduced probably by four or five.
Okay. I would say fifty percent of the employee should be able to park in the rear. I think that's a good number and shoot for like, that would be about five parking spaces back there. Rob, Rob.
Just a question, wasn't part of the backyard going to be utilized as outdoor, like seating or eating space?
Yes, and that's been significant, that area has been significantly reduced with the revisions. Maybe Eric, maybe you could go right into explaining what the, the changes and the modifications are to the plan from the last panel and we reviewed.
Yeah, sure. So when we came in front of you in September, we needed thirty-three spots. There were thirteen from the building for the, the, uh, the first floor, second floor, storage. Um, and then we had a big two thousand square foot outdoor space in the back, which added twenty spots to thirteen, which is where we got to thirty-three. So in order to get it down to fifteen, we now only have two hundred square feet of outdoor space, which is two spots, which is how we got from thirteen plus two is now our fifteen spot requirement.
So let's say you're fully, you have full capacity. How many people are eating outside?
Um, right now we have room for basically two picnic tables.
My only concern is just vehicles traveling in and out with people sitting in the back. I, I don't know. I mean, if you got the parking variance, I don't know that five spots is required.
Well, the idea, the idea is for staff only to park back there. They wouldn't be customer. It wouldn't be customer parking. So it would be staff parking. They would come in, they would basically be stationary for an extended period of time for their shift. And then they would leave. So it, it is controlled to that degree.
I guess the question is, if you got the parking variance, is this required?
I can hear you now.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you, Wayne.
That's better, that's better. Um, okay. So even though the, the parking is not required, Eric, you said you're, you're willing to throw some spots back there, correct? Is that what we're understanding?
Yeah, I would prefer not to just because there will be people sitting in the back. Um, but if we have to, then we will.
I don't know. I mean, I understand where Sue's coming from, but my, I just don't see where you're gonna have a gate and employees are gonna open and close the gate. The gates can be left open. People are gonna be wandering in the back. Um, I just, I think for security purposes and people sitting eating in the back, they got a variance. I just, I don't see where this requirement is required. I just, I don't know. I'd rather have a secure backyard that you're not going to have issues in a drinking establishment and it's secure for people to be outside eating in the picnic table. To me, that's a higher priority than a couple of parking spots for staff, especially when, when the zoning board looked at this and granted a variant.
Okay, I mean, I think if you look at the plan, the, the tables, the two tables are in close proximity to the building itself. There is a very large expansive open area, just a gravelled area in the rear then that is left. It's not a landscaped area. Um, I, I don't think the introduction of a few additional vehicles at staff level only being limited um, is going to be a factor that would affect that, um, outdoor dining area. Um, I think it would be an improvement actually and would, you know, serve to, again, just still reduce the on-street parking. And it would spaces for customers on the street.
Wayne, if I may.
Wayne? I don't know if you can, okay, Dan, go ahead. I don't know if Wayne can hear you.
Yeah, Wayne, one of the issues that was discussed this afternoon during our meeting was that, um, the initial period of the special apartment is, um, you know, going to be running while construction is underway. The gentleman just indicated that they had a plan to provide and encourage their employees to ride to work. So we don't really know how many cars we're even speaking about. So if the planning board makes it a recommendation that only a certain number of, um, individuals, um, employees, um, utilize the street parking, this may not be an issue once the business plan is implemented. So, um, I think we should consider that as well. Particularly if, um, the gentleman doesn't know how many employees he's talking about or where they're going to reside or even if they're gonna be driving to work.
And if I could just say one more thing, we would rather have a little bit of flexibility for landscaping the backyard in the future, um, you know, putting down grass. And if you have these spots there, then we wouldn't be able to do that.
All right, I think we have lost Wayne's audio. Um, Chuck?
Yeah, Wayne, Wayne's gonna try, uh, this is Kyla. Wayne is going to try signing out maybe and coming back in. He lost. He can see everyone, but he can't hear.
Right. So Chuck, will you please take over as vice chair until Wayne?
Yes, I will. Yes, I will.
Okay, thank you.
So, uh, all right, this is Kyla. Again, one thing that Wayne said, I think it was what Dan Gartenstein was saying, is that this is a special permit term Wayne thought, um, possibly the board could revisit the parking issue for staff parking, uh, as it comes back to be reviewed periodically. If you want to give it a shorter term to begin with or, um, address it that way. He wanted me to mention that to everyone.
And you certainly could make your approval without prejudice to the parking issue being revisited a year from now when the extension is requested.
Okay, I. Wayne, you, your audio still gone?
Yes, he's still, he's still out, Chuck.
He's still, I see the picture came back up.
I, I think I'd agree with Dan. I mean, I, I think I'd rather visit this. I kind of would like to see the project completed. I think it's important to have outdoor space, especially with COVID and the way restaurants are. We have a new restaurant starting up. I mean, they're gonna need any help they can. Um, having an outdoor green space. I just, I don't know. I, I'm. I, I, I think that would be more important for a business plan than, than, than hindering with parking. Especially when we don't even know how many employees are gonna have and if parking is even gonna be an issue.
Yeah, I do think the understanding has to be made clear on the record that you're not making any final determination with regard to this issue and that it will be revisited next year. So that the applicant understands that, um, you know, this is something that is going to be addressed in the future depending on his business model and that the board is encouraging him to, um, discourage employees, you know, um, to utilize street parking.
I would agree with that.
Okay, uh, Sue, can, could you read all that stuff that we're putting, uh, put into motion?
Okay, well, if, if.
I think the question is, you know, we, we have another board member.
Items in the staff notes. I don't know if, um, you've had the chance to review them. Okay, Wayne is still having audio problems. All right. Um, what I'd like to suggest is that there are, as I said, there's multiple issues in the staff notes that we're looking for more information on. I think at this point it would be appropriate, and I know you're not gonna like this one, but table this for one more month. Um, we will send the staff notes to the applicant to address them. There are items like, uh, details, um, for light, more detail for lighting, um, some.
I called, brought you.
Right, um, signage. I think you're still working out, Eric, some of the, the details on your color and your logos. Um, yeah, there's, uh, an issue that, uh, we need to see a cost estimate for the, all of the site work that's going to be done and put in place, um, to determine whether or not a performance bond. So I think we can clean this up in a month and come back with all of these items. And we'd have a, a solid application that I feel more confident in recommending a, uh, approval on tonight.
Come back.
Oh.
I will.
Okay, I couldn't hear anybody before.
Okay, we were just, Wayne, we were just getting ready to make a motion. The table is for, uh, thirty days.
Okay. And is that to discuss?
Because of all the issues that were not answered.
Okay. Where, where are you with the parking?
What we decided Wayne on that is that, um, the applicant would be directed to encourage their staff not to park on the street. Uh, maybe to use alternative, um, means of transportation. And that we will revisit this, um, when a renewal comes due. So we're not making a final determination at this point. But it will be revisited and the applicant is aware of that. Um, the applicant also mentioned while you were, um, not available that they are looking potentially maybe to expand some green space in the rear rather than just having it all an open, uh, gravel area. Wayne? I think we may have lost Wayne.
I lost him again.
Okay, um, again, it looks like we've wa- lost Wayne again. Chuck, I'm gonna ask you again to continue.
So, just I have a question. What is the applicant's timeframe for building and what, like, where do we stand with being able to do anything? Can they even get a building permit for like a clean out or they need some type of approval for it?
They would need approval.
And also to start the process for getting a liquor license, I would also need this approval too.
I just think that at this point, there are too many unanswered questions. Um, you know, I, I, we didn't really have time to review a lot of this um, and go through it with the applicant. We only received these really on Thursday. Um, and, or late Thursday evening. So, uh, didn't give us a lot of time to take a look at them and get back to the applicant with our comments. with our comments. So I think that, you know, it's a reasonable request, um, that we forward all of our staff notes to the applicant and have a very solid application that you are approving, rather than a lot of unanswered questions.
And anything else from the board? All right, I make a motion, we, uh, table this for thirty days to our next meeting. Do I have a second? Second by Kevin? Okay, uh, Charles Block will vote yes. Robert Jacobson?
Yes.
Matt Gillis?
Yes.
Kevin Roach?
Yes.
Vince?
Vince.
You're up.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Pass you now, Ashley.
Okay.
Okay, you, what?
Uh, Eric, I was just gonna say, Eric, um, we will forward our staff notes to you, um, ASAP, and then we can talk about them, uh, either tomorrow or on, um, Wednesday, Thursday. We'll catch up with each other, okay?
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, number ten, we, uh, we put off, okay, item number eleven. Fifty-five Greenkill Avenue. Site plan will install new signage and awnings on existing building. SBL fifty-six point one zero nine dash four dash four three, secret determination. Zone zero two. Ward four, Greenkill Avenue LLC, applicant owner. Do we have an applicant here?
Yeah.
Paul Black is here.
Oh, okay, how you doing, Paul?
Well, how are you guys? Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Wayne still gone?
Yeah, Wayne is still having difficulty, so go ahead, Chuck.
Okay, the application is to install, uh, new signage and awnings on existing building. Uh, okay, uh,
Chuck, maybe Paul can just give a quick overview of, uh, he's got the next,
That's what I was about to say, thank you. Paul, you wanna throw that at us?
Yeah, so, um, we're working with, uh, the new owner of, uh, three properties. Um, they're listed, uh, individually, obviously, as applications because of their, um, SPLs, but, uh, the owner is, uh, Hagai Barlev, um, and he's looking to make some interior, uh, exterior improvements, um, and also interior improvements to these, um, three buildings. And one of his, um, one of the things that he did first was pretty much, um, establish, get Katie Dwyer, Katie Dwyer Designs, to establish a brand mark, um, that is uniform over the three buildings. Um, and then we've been engaged to, uh, further develop that brand, um, into unified signage approach, um, for the three buildings. And, um, so what we're trying to do here is, number one, most of the awnings at these locations are, um, out of scale with the character, architecture, building. They're also in disrepair. Just on this one, we've got a main entrance awning. This, these are the existing conditions. Zone, um, like to make, um, we're going with like a very dark style awning, much smaller profile. It's not that small on the Greenkill Avenue, but as you'll see when we get over to the Brush and Sherb factory, it really brought the size of the awnings down, um, to a more reasonable level that's more in keeping with the style and scale, um, of the building. Uh, very simple, uh, white icon on the entry glass that tells people it's Pajama Factory. And one of the things that, um, Hagai was considering doing is probably lighten the exterior of these buildings to kind of highlight the architecture. And, uh, we will probably, um, be doing like the up-down torchlights and, uh, around some of these, probably on these raised pillars. And so we're hoping to highlight the signage with that, and just kind of give, um, the building some evening presence. Obviously, that lighting package is not in my scope of work, but I just wanted to give you some idea of what might happen here. So, what we're basically proposing is an awning, vinyl lettering through the window, uh, hanging sign, and I believe we're either going to remove, um, the side awning, but, um, we'll step whether that handicap access ramp needs to have an awning over the top of it. I would think that it does. So in that case, what we'll probably do is, I don't have dimensions of it right now, but it would just be, uh, the awning is existing. Um, but the only ones that really include signage, um, are the, the dimension bearing on the building and the awning. Now, the other things is that these awnings, uh, unlike some of the other ones, will have downlighting, light the area immediately below for, um, you know, just basically for security and convenience, uh, for visitors, um, in the evening hours. The color options for the awnings haven't been quite been, uh, been determined, but I will tell you that it's either gonna be dark gray, darker gray, or black. So it's, it's, it's gonna be a dark field, and we're gonna put the, uh, the actual street address and avenue, uh, on the fascia of the awning to, um, for better visibility for, um, you know, people just, just finding the, finding the building, so. Pretty much that patient. We're also gonna utilise, look, what, look, what appears to be an original sign bracket for the hanging sign. Um, yeah, this, this seems original to the building. I mean, maybe it is, maybe it isn't. It seems very old, it kind of goes with the industrial feel of, uh, a factory. Clean it up and, uh, make sure that the, the guy wires are in good shape. But we'd like to also hang a sign from that.
Okay, yep.
I'm back.
Back, okay, Wayne is back.
I'm back. I had to go to a different device.
Okay, when we just went over, uh, Paul just went over the different signs for, uh, for item eleven. The only, the, the stuff that goes over the city sidewalks and that, we have, do we have to have insurance for those certificates?
Yes, that is the one, Board Policy six and twenty-four are mentioned in the notes to add as part of your approval. The only other, um, thing I would mention is that if, if the applicant does want to additional lighting, like you described, Paul, that he would, to just bring that back to us, staff, at least we'll evaluate it to see if it needs.
Yeah, I, I don't see a problem leaving that up to the staff. Does everybody else agree with, uh, staff?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Any, anybody else have any questions? Okay, this is a type-two action under secret, and therefore is predetermined to have no significant negative environmental impact, and no further review of the board is required. I make that a motion. Do I have a second?
You don't, you don't need a motion on that, Chuck.
Oh, I, okay.
For a type-two, no.
Oh, all right, yes. Okay. Wayne, did you wanna take and make the, the motion on this?
No, take, take, take it from here, take it from there, Chuck. I'll get on the next item.
Oh, okay, all right.
Chuck, if you want, I can just basically recap for you. It would be to approve the signage and the canopy overhangs as submitted with Board Policy six and twenty-four, and that any additional lighting be brought back to staff for review and approval.
That's, that's correct. I make that a motion. Do I have a second? Kevin Roach, okay, uh, all in favor? Charles Block will say yes. Robert Jacobson?
Yes.
Matt Gillis?
Yes.
Kevin Roach?
Yes.
Vince?
Yes.
Okay, Mitch. Motion passed, okay. Item twelve, you taking that, Wayne?
Sure, sure. Uh, item twelve is seventy-seven Cornell Street. It's a site plan to install new signage and awnings on an existing building. Section block allotted fifty-six point twenty-five dash four dash eight, secret determination, zone C two, mixed-use overlay district, ward six, seventy-seven Cornell Street LLC is the applicant owner. Paul, are you still here with us for that?
I am, yes, thank you.
Okay, all right. Um, go ahead.
Much, much like the previous, um, location, this is gonna have a unified look with the Pajama Factory. Uh, yeah, so these are the existing conditions, um, older awnings, um, a little bit shabby, time to change those. They're also really deep and really wide. We got a scale with the building, and this one, really not appropriate. We've got a four-by-six hanging sign. There are a total of, uh, four awnings. Uh, there's the, there's a large one over the side entrance to the building, which is where the public comes through, and, uh, although there are three other, uh, egress doors and, but they are keyed, so the tenants can use those, and those are on the front of the building. That's, yeah, that's this page here. And, um, these are really not public access doors, but they do have awning over them. Then they're like, this building, and really, seriously, a lot of the interesting architecture that's happened from the building. So we're proposing a removal of those. And, um, if you go to the third, uh, page, they've got a, a much more scaled-down version of the awning, which will have, uh, lighting just, uh, you know, in the canopy, downlighting in the canopy. Um, the, uh, I don't know if you noticed it, but, uh, there's a, a slider, a sliding, an old sliding door. Um, they're gonna cover that with some reclaimed wood to give it, you know, a little bit more, um, appropriate look. We'll clean up the, clean up the concrete and, uh, and repaint the wall. Um, again, these are similar, um, vinyl decals on the entry glass to kind of have a good look, obviously, with the emphasis being on, this is the Sherb factory, and we have the nine-one-one address, I guess, on the, uh, on the awning, next page, oops. Um, yeah, so that we've gone down to a, um, we've gone to a five-by-five projecting sign on this, using, you know, material, wear logo. The big thing on was, uh, four-by-six, I think, five-by-five, may probably be slightly under five-by-five. But, uh, pretty much a double-sided sign, similar to existing, but, like the existing one, it'll be number one. And, um, this, this is really the one, um, uh, kind of requires a bit of a leap of faith. Um, this is something that, um, Badat and I and Hagai worked together on. I'm trying to utilise that empty recessed area, kind of create a, um, what may appear to look like, uh, a contemporary version, um, of what would be a traditional, you know, I guess, an advertising mural. It would just have the typography and, um, a somewhat distressed, uh, whitewash on the brick. That's kind of what we're shooting for in that, in that area. There's a page with dimensions on that, um, and a close-up of it. Three hundred and ninety square feet. Total thirteen by thirty. In the recessed, and that's basically, we're following the recessed area of the brick is seventeen feet by thirty-five, and that's like outer, the outer perimeter of which brick starts to cut in, so we're kind of using that as a, as a frame of it. This is all gonna be hand-painted on the building. There's no, like, dimensional letters on this. It would just all be, um, painted like, uh, like, similar to the Fuller, the way the Fuller building would be. The idea I came from. So. Um, and then, uh, if you go to, um, the next page, do you guys have any questions on this page at all, or do you wanna just go through it, and then you guys can?
The only thing, Paul, that I'm gonna, uh, say is that the size of that, uh, sign, well, I like it. I think it looks, it's perfect, and it works in that space. Um, just need to confirm with the, uh, zoning officer that it's sufficient. Um, and that would just mean, uh, looking at the dimension of the wall and then make a multiplication factor, and I didn't have that to check, so we can do that.
I, the overall length of the wall is, is approximately one hundred feet. And if I read the code correctly for this, uh, we're allowed two square feet for every linear feet, so we're really limited to, what, two hundred square feet?
Yes, yeah.
All right, so we, so we, what we're not, you, what we're not utilising is the frontage of the building for signage, really. Um, we have a, we have a twenty-five-square-foot sign on a building that's probably, uh, conservatively, uh, maybe, maybe two hundred and fifty feet long. Does that sound about right? I mean, I can, I can get all those measurements. But, uh, would we be able to use any of the frontage of the one building, uh, from the, the side that faces Cornell Street to use on this side, or is that, is it just, um, very strictly applied to the, to the wall that it's on?
That's a question for the zoning officer, but I think it has to be just the side of the building that it's located on. But I, I mean, I think it looks great. I think it works. Um, if it necessitates, uh, going for variance, I, I think it's an appropriate one to request.
Okay, fair enough. Uh, we can also make it look good at the permitted size. I mean, um, again, this is being driven by, uh, you know, the client and what they're, uh, what they're trying to achieve, uh, but we'll see, we'll see what he, what he wants to do. Um, uh, the next page just kind of shows a retouched version of the front entrance that gets rid of the giant awning that spans all the way across the brick and goes with a more discreet awning in the front, and, um, uh, some, again, a decal. These are the torch-style fixtures that they're looking to install. I think they're looking to install them on this building first, because it has so much frontage. But again, I'll tell Hagai that he needs to, uh, submit the specs for this. Um, and what we just did, just to kind of give you an idea of what the awnings would look like on the last, well, these are, these are obviously, the next page is, is the, um, are there all the dimensions of the awnings? We do have a night rendering of that, and I think we'll probably include that with, uh, a night rendering of how the lights would look on the building. But we'll probably do that when we submit, uh, some, an application for the, for the outdoor lighting. So that's pretty much it for this location.
That's rather thorough.
That's good. This is Kenny.
This is Kevin. I have a quick minute. I thought at one point the mayor was, um, suggesting some mural, um, review process for the, it was typically, I think, for, oh, positive or such, but if this, I'm not sure if this would fit the same definition, or if any, if that ever went anywhere. Just a thought about the.
There has not been an official policy adopted by the city at this time. There has not been an official policy adopted by the city at this time.
Okay, thanks, Sue.
Any other questions from the board? All right. This is a type two action under seeker, so no further review of the board is required. At this time, I'll make a motion that we approve item number twelve. And Sue, do you have a list of conditions there for us?
I do, that it would incorporate Board Policy six and Board Policy twenty-four. Lighting would be returned to staff for the review and approval, and we will confirm with the zoning enforcement officer the signage on the the large sign on, painted on the wall of the building.
Okay, thank you. So that was a motion. I have a second on the second by Robert Jacobson. All in favor? Wayne Platt is a yes. Charles Polacko?
Is a yes.
Robert Jacobson? Matt Gillis?
Yes.
Kevin Roach?
Yes.
Okay, it is approved. All right, moving on to item number thirteen. Did we lose Paul on this one? Is he, is he here for this one too?
Here.
Okay. This is one hundred and one Greenkill Avenue. Site plan to install new signage and awnings on an existing building. Section block and lot is fifty-six point one oh nine dash two dash forty-one. Secret determination zone O two, mixed use overlay district. Ward four, one oh one Greenkill Avenue LLC is the applicant owner. Paul is here again. All right, so fire away. What do we got here now?
To locate, it's extending the same plan to outdated, old style awning. Go to the second page, you'll see our suggested revisions here, which is a more modern awning. Simple, simple approach for a logo on the glass, and we're introducing similar dimensional letters directly on the brick, the same way we did the pajama factory. And also you'll see that this is also mimics the same style as the shirt factory, so all the dimensions are here, the fabrication method, the square footage. This is, this is just an awning and some lettering. We're also encouraging the client to remove the fences that are installed in the front that they don't really serve any purpose. And they don't really look appropriate to the building, so.
Nothing over the city right of way here. This is all on the parking lot side, right?
Correct, yes, I just made that.
Okay, okay. Okay. Any questions from the board? Okay. Again, under seeker, this is a type two action, so no further review of the board is required at this time. Make a motion that we approve item number thirteen with Board Policy six, and anything else, Sue, on that? I'm sorry?
That is it.
Okay, that is a motion. Do I have a second? Looks like Robert Jacobson, second on there. All in favor? Wayne Platt is a yes. Charles Polacko?
Is a yes.
Robert Jacobson? Matt Gillis?
Yes.
Kevin Roach?
Yes.
Okay, we're carried. All right, thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Nothing else for you here, right?
I don't think so.
Okay, we'll send you on your way then.
Have a nice day.
Okay, you too, thank you. All right, item number fourteen, time is seven fifty-five. It is one oh nine Abiel Street, a request for a parking waiver for conversion from a one family to a two family residence. Section block and lot is fifty-six point forty-three dash two dash twenty-seven. Secret determination zone RT, roundout historic district. Historic Landmarks Preservation Commission, Heritage Area Commission, Ward eight, Elias Cunningham is the applicant owner. Is Elias here?
Yes, he is.
Hey, how are you?
Doing well, how are you?
Good. All right. This is, we don't usually get these kind of applications, do we, Sue?
No.
So I believe I'm before you. I have all permissions, went through all the approval processes. I'm here for, not for parking variance, but the parking variance waiver. One of that is within two hundred and forty feet of the municipal lot. We're already grandfathered into two spaces, and I believe the conversion only requires one additional one.
And Sue, we're, we are in proximity to that lot that was carved out just beyond Hone Street, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
All right. Seems pretty well cut and dry. Anybody questions from the board on this? Okay. And I'm rushing papers. I know I'm right in front of that microphone, Sue, I'm sorry. All right, so the issue is a waiver is a type two action, so no further review of the board is required on that. So at this time, I will make a motion that we approve the request for the parking waiver for item number fourteen. There's no other items that, that are conditions, right, Sue? That's it?
That is it.
Okay, do I have a second on that? Second by Robert Jacobson. All in favor? Wayne Platt is a yes. Charles Polacko?
Is a yes.
Robert Jacobson? Yep, he's good, okay. Matt Gillis?
Yes.
Kevin Roach?
Yes.
Okay, and how long have you been waiting here tonight, sir? Quite a, quite a while, right?
A little while, yeah.
Okay, look, you're, you're approved. We're gonna send you home now.
Awesome, thank you very much.
All right, thank you, sir. All right. Item fifteen was we, we pulled that, right? That's, that was mentioned at the beginning of the meeting. Yeah. Moving on to item number, we're in rezoning recommendations now. Item seventeen is a recommendation to the common council to remove any and all current regulations of livestock and poultry in the City of Kingston Code from chapter four oh five in Peren's zoning, article four in Peren's district regulations, Peren's section four oh five dash nine A and five and B and relocating said regulations to City of Kingston Code, chapter one fifty-one, under animals, article four, which is other animals. All right. Let's get my and there's only one aspect of this that we're looking to change, right, Sue?
That is correct. On that section of zoning that you see in your staff notes.
Yeah.
Only portion of that, or the only element of that would be that subparagraph B would be removed in its entirety and the exception, other animals. And the enforcement would then move gift from the zoning enforcement officer to the animal control officer who is present now the NSVCA for the City of Kingston.
Okay.
Wayne, Dan has his hand up.
Go ahead, Dan.
Clarification, the issue of enforcement and which city staff member would enforce it is an issue that's going to be addressed later by the council. I would not say that necessarily this takes it away from the zoning enforcement officer. That's a personnel issue that's going to be determined, you know, operationally by the mayor. The, the issue here is that the council needs to address regulations in general with regard to maintaining ultra or other livestock as pets within the city. Currently, it is placed in the zoning code, which means that the legislature, in order to amend the sections, has to go through this entire referral process rather than having jurisdiction to just address it, you know, by resolution or law.
Okay, and this is Wayne Platt. Was the impetus behind this also because the zoning enforcement officer was doing a lot of the investigation on this, and it should actually be handled by some other agency, do we, or other office?
No, it's not about who is enforcing it. It's a matter of the code being ambiguous at this point and in many respects unenforceable and not current, so the issue is correcting the language. Who is going to ultimately enforce it and whose job it's going to be to do inspections is something that I, like I said, will be addressed operationally after the corrections are made.
Okay. Any other questions? Thumbs up, and will we move forward with this or not? Before we go to a motion? Okay. Okay. I will make a motion that we recommend to the common council to remove any and all current regulations of livestock and poultry to the City of Kingston Code. Now, do I highlight removal of, of that, that item B? Is that how I'm gonna?
I think as proposed, it's in, it's
Okay, as, as proposed. All right, that is a motion.
You can also just acknowledge the referral and state that you have no objection to the legislation as proposed.
Okay. All right, so we have no
Ending the adoption, you're waiving your right to make any objection.
Okay.
But by asking for this, I presume the common council is going to reinstate a new law.
Once the provisions are moved into animal control and are out of the zoning code, the council intends to revisit the entire issue and adopt regulations that are more appropriate given the current circumstances. Whether they're going to require permits, whether they're going to require licenses, whether they're going to make whether they're going to set square footage requirements is something that is yet to be determined, but at this point, they can't even begin that process because it's erroneously placed in the zoning code.
Anything else? Okay. All right, so as I said, I'm making a motion to recommend the change to the, this section of the zoning code as proposed. Do I have a second on that? Second by Kevin Roach. All in favor? Wayne Platt is a yes. Charles Polacko?
Yes.
Robert Jacobson? Matt Gillis?
Yes.
Kevin Roach?
Yes.
Okay, motion is carried. All right. Item eighteen, we're also under rezoning recommendations. It's a recommendation to the common council with regard to adding proposed section four oh five dash fifty-five point one C to the City of Kingston zoning code to permit the issuance of a temporary use variance during federal, state, or local states of emergency. Dan, do you want to speak to that too, what we're looking at?
Yes, the the proposal was the result of a request that was made by a particular property owner in Uptown Kingston who has allegedly been unable to rent their space due to conditions related to COVID. They requested that the zoning board of appeals grant them a variance. The zoning board of appeals correctly told them that they do not have jurisdiction to enter a variance, that a variance is a permanent you know, determination that runs with the land, and they can do it on a temporary basis. The zoning board of appeals suggested that the individual go to the council and ask the council to amend the statute to give them the jurisdiction to grant this type of request. Valence would be, I mean, the, the prerequisite would be that it is, that there is a declared state of emergency. It's not limited to COVID. It would be any state of emergency. God forbid we have another one, you know, down the road. The applicant would have to show that they were unable to use or lease their space for a permitted use under the code, and that their inability to lease the space is directly tied to a condition that is caused by the emergency. They would have to establish that by documentary evidence. They would have to you know, agree upfront that this was for a temporary period and that at the conclusion of the period, they would submit to an inspection by the building department to ensure that any modifications have been removed and that the property was restored necessary to go back to a permitted use. I believe that the actual legislation has been forwarded to everybody. There are numerous layers of protections that are built in, and it basically just gives the zoning board of appeals the authority to consider a type of request that previously they were not allowed to consider.
All right, this is Wayne Platt. Now, an example of this, Dan, could be, say, a restaurateur could, could not keep, keep his restaurant open during the state of emergency, and could, through this process, maybe have it converted into some type of residential use during this period of time. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
So again, they would have to go through the public hearing process and the zoning board of appeals process and convince the zoning board of appeals that the proposed alternate use is not only necessary, but that it's appropriate given the location and that it won't improperly disrupt the, you know, the neighborhood of the surrounding properties.
All right.
Confirmation for the ZBA.
All right, and also, any type of alteration to the, like you said, to the buildings would have to comply with New York State Building Code, right?
Correct, and one of the requirements for the zoning board of appeals, one considering any variance, is that the applicant present documentary proof with regard to their expenses and their hardship, and the statute would specifically provide that expenses related to implementing the temporary use could not be used as a basis to secure a permanent variance at the conclusion of the period. So for example, if you know, a, if a storefront is asking for permission to lease the space for residential purposes and needs to put in a bathroom for, for example, they could not then go back to the zoning board of appeals at the conclusion of the period and say that the cost of installing the bathroom is justification for them getting a permanent variance. Those expenses related to the conversion could not be considered by the ZBA.
The only, the only other thing I would add is that I think the board, in their recommendation on this would include the language that Dan somewhat alluded to, and we spoke about this afternoon or this morning, Wayne, and that would be that the inspection will be made at the conclusion of the state of emergency or expiration of the temporary use areas by the building safety division, and any and all improvements must be removed at that point in time, so that they don't continue to exist, and then, yeah, you can't make the argument not that they could, but that they won't be given that leverage to make the argument in the future.
And I believe the Historic Landmark Preservation Commission had discussed that similar addition, and I believe it's appropriate.
Any other, any questions? I, I can't see this being put into much use myself. I don't, me personally, but if somebody wants to go through the process of of, of, you know, doing this, then I mean, I don't have a problem with it. And, and, and having that language, that last paragraph that Sue has just mentioned, to be added to any recommendation that we send over to the council. Do we move forward with this? Okay, well, no other questions. I'm gonna make a motion that we recommend this proposed zoning change, zoning code change as proposed with the addition of that the additional language that Sue Cahill has mentioned in, in her statement there. So that is a motion. Do I have a second on this? Second by Kevin Roach? Second by Kevin Roach. Um, Wayne Platt is a, a yes. And Charles Palaco?
Yes.
Robert Jacobson?
Yes.
Okay, uh, Matt Gillis?
Yes.
Kevin Roach?
Yes.
Okay, that is carried. Okay, um, anything else before the board tonight, Sue?
That is it.
Okay. Uh, thank you, everybody. And, uh, thank you all folks who have been listening in tonight. And, uh, at this time, I'll make a motion that we adjourn the meeting at eight twelve PM. Do I have a second? Second by Robert Jacobson. Wayne Platt is a yes. Charles Palaco?
Yes.
Robert Jacobson? Kevin Roach? Matt Gillis? I threw a curve ball in there. Okay, and, uh, so that is carried. And Vince and Katie, good seeing you tonight.
Thanks, everyone. Have a good night.
All right, all right, Dan, thank you. Alderman, take care. All right, good night, everybody.
Everybody.